Time is now six o'clock. At this time, we will call this meeting to order in the April meeting 2021 of Dawson County Planning Commission. We'll begin with invocation from Tim Bennett, if you would please stand by our heads.
Most kind of grace is heavenly, Father. We thank you once again, Lord, for your mercy and your grace and your love toward us. We just pray, Lord, in this beating that everything that we say and do, God would both bring glory and honor to you and to Dawson County, to the citizens of Dawson County. And we just pray everything that we say and do will bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ask you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seen. This time we'll have a roll call, Ms. Harmony, when you're ready. Record will show that there are four of us present. We currently do not have our new member here tonight, Steve Sandy. Anxious wait to see him next time. Under announcements, there will be a planning commission meeting May the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, same location, same time. Gentlemen, I assume without opportunity to look over the minutes, is there any amendments that need to be made? If not, is there a motion? Second, move in a second to approve all in favor. Motion is carried for zero. The agenda that's presented before you tonight from staff, assuming you've had opportunity to look over it, if there's any changes that need to be made, if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Move in a second, all in favor. Motion is carried for zero. If you're here tonight to speak either in favor or in opposition of any application, and you have made contributions of more than two hundred fifty dollars to any local official campaign, there's a form that you need to be filled out prior to your speaking tonight, and Harmony has that up here at the desk if you need to fill that out. Begin with old business, presentation of Z A twenty-one dash zero seven. Jim King has requested rezone fourteen point three acres of tax mount parcel one fourteen zero three three zero zero five. From RA to CHB for the purpose of building retail office warehouse space. Is someone here to speak for Mr. King? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. If you will begin by stating your name just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here tonight to try to see if I can beat the world's record for a number of public hearings for a case, but this is the same two cases that we that are brought before you last month, and we found something different on the CHB case. The Z A twenty-one zero seven, there was a life estate parcel that was out, and we've hence, I guess, since that, we've come up with proof that the life estate has transferred to the owner, and so we've gone back and included that in our application as well as a parcel that is between the application we submitted before in Walmart's piece of backs right up behind Walmart. So we've added both of those to our CHB application. And so I would respectfully ask that you table these, both of these cases until next month, so that we can bring the, we submitted a new application for the CHB, and we need to bring it forward so that these two run concurrent with each other. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. You have a request to table both Z A twenty-one dash zero seven and twenty-one dot zero eight until our next meeting due to some new information being brought into this. Is there any discussion? No discussion, is there a motion? Motion to approve table. Second, a motion in a second to table Z A twenty-one oh seven and twenty-one oh eight until our next meeting. All in favor. Motion is carried for zero. Thanks, sir. Under new business, application for variance, presentation of V R twenty-one dash zero four, Thomas and Leanne Harder is requesting to vary from the Dawson County subdivision regulations, Article five, section five oh four two one. No more than five lots will be created from present track within a five-year period, tax amount partial one oh one dash zero one one dash zero one zero, probably one thirty-six east. Is someone here to speak for Thomas and or Leanne Harder? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. Are you Thomas of Leanne Harder?
Yes, I'm Leanne.
The remainder of the board, yes, Tom and Leanne.
If you would give us a brief description as to the reason for your variance.
We bought a total of fifty-three acres off one thirty-six. Our, our goal was to, you know, have our children to live there. I have two boys eventually. I guess, you know, we call it a little homestead, but so that's not anytime soon. But then we had that thirteen acres of land that we would like our, our family. We're not blood, but been with us for over twenty years. I don't want to say care, care, well caregiver. You know, they'll be there when we get older, you know, and like I said, been with us for many, many years. So we looked at that, that piece of land, that thirteen acres. And I know we have to give, or we, it has to be five acre lots, so we want to do that, but still maintain the other like, the other thirteen acres, yes.
Your children, how old are they?
Thirty-three and thirty, yeah, thirty-four.
Okay, and where are they located at now?
Coming up. But them in Dawsonville have been, have been raised here. Well, not, we moved here when they were in middle school, so maybe not raised.
You're looking to divide this out for a lifelong friend that you're considering family, but you're needing to do so in less than the five-year period of time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, could I chip in here?
Please, please, Chairman.
Doing a pretty good job.
You did. You should. I mean, I like full disclosure here, just, just what you're asking. One of our sons has no interest in it. We hope he does at some point. The other one has an interest, but
Hasn't sold herself.
The, the problem with, problem with wood right now, you guys know, nobody can afford to build a house, or at least our son can't. So we don't know when that's going to happen, and and we know, and we had great conversations with these two nice people over here. We know that, like Leanne said, we have to do the five acres and we're, and I know you guys know zoning a lot better than we do. But we're, we're asking to do something about two and a half years early. We had two, two years and probably eight or nine months before the five years is up. And, and we didn't even know about the five years. That's our fault. And this just came up, and this, this family, they got two sons, one in high school, one in middle school, and they have their own home. And they really, and they're, they're happy where they are, but they cover us like family when we're, if we leave and we have two rescue donkeys and two pigs and four chickens and little hobby farm.
And four dogs.
Yeah, so instead of them living in our house, we'd like to, and they would too, they'd like to just stay in their own house and, and look after our farm. So that's, that's the bottom line.
Any questions to that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing those, is there anyone here speaking opposition to the application? See, and this time we close the board for discussion. We need discussion on the variance to allow this division in less than the five-year period. Is there a motion? Second, move in a second to approve. I'm going to allow y'all to vote. Locking anything, so all in favor. Motion is carried. You have your variance. Presentation of V R twenty-one day zero five, Kirk Trump is requesting to vary from the Dawson County Land Use Resolution Article three, section three oh nine, C three, front setback reduction from forty feet to twenty feet to bring a non-conformant structure into compliance, tax mount parcel L seventeen dash one eight nine Oak Grove Road. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Kirk Trump? Would please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there. Would please state your name.
Kurt Trump.
And if you would give us a reason for your variance application.
Basically, in the existing slab that was up there, where the porch was, it was twenty-two inches from the edge of the house. When I poured the new slab and required a variance because it brings the edge of that slab about eleven inches closer to the road, maybe. And I want to build that in where it was a port. I want to enclose it in so it'd be part of the house.
Is there also a water issue that goes along with this?
I fixed all that. I put a probably about sixty-five feet total concrete steel reinforced wall, run it slap through the house all the way to the bank next to the road there.
So you've got the water issue taken care of.
Yeah, I ain't got no water in that basin.
Very good. Any questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in favor of the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Catherine Wright. I live at three twenty-nine Oak Grove Road. I fully support what Mr. Trump's trying to do. I think it will improve the looks of his property, and I think it will be an access to the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you know anyone else to speak in favor of the application? You would also please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
My name is Bill Mayer. I live at two fifty-one Oak Grove Road, two driveways up from Mr. Trump's property. I've been watching what he's been doing the last few months, and I have been very, very pleased with it. I know that at the moment it's still an eyesore because of the construction trash, but it's going to be nice. And I hope y'all will recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Do you want else to speak in favor of the application? Seeing those, is there anyone speaking opposition to the application? See, and just have a close board discussion, discussion on this variance. See, and is there a motion?
Motion to approve the variance.
Second, move in a second to approve all in favor. Motion is carried three zero. Application for reason, presentation of Z A twenty-one dash zero nine, Tim Hamby is requesting to rezone tax map parcel one oh six zero five one, one oh six zero five one, zero one five, one oh six zero five one oh one four from RA and VCR to RSR for the purpose of combining and subsidizing the parcels per RSR standards. Someone here to speak for Tim Hamby. You would please come forward. Write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. Would please state your name.
Tim Hamby.
Give us a reason for your rezone request.
Just it's, I want to combine, I've got, there's eight, right, nine acres total. Part of a zone VCR, part of a phone zone RA. I just wanted to get it all rezone in the one zoning. This basically, I've got part of soul and being, maybe they're going to build or sell the many lots. I don't want them to sub buy it on there. I think you guys probably have a plan that I proposed plan.
How long have you had this piece properly?
Well, my dad bought it in nineteen eighty-five or six, so since I was eight-year-old.
And it was VCR in eighty-five?
No, we developed a part of it into a subdivision. There's two lots that we still own that are, they're, were part of the subdivision, and that's what's on VCR. That was the only zone they had back then for a subdivision, from what I understand. So I don't even think that's a zoning anymore.
Not a viable zoning anymore. Just a little odd to me to see it there, but nonetheless.
Me and you both.
Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing those, is anyone here speaking opposition to the application? Say, now just have, we'll close the board for discussion. Do you have any discussion? Is there a motion? Second, move in a second to approve all in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Your rezone will go before the Board of Commissioners next month. May twentieth. And you will go before the Board of Commissioners. Everyone else that has passed with a variance, your business is essentially over. You have passed with your variance. You have your variance. The rezone, we're recommending board, we recommend to the Board of Commissioners for rezones, but variances are handled in-house. Under opponent hearings, presentation of Dawson County's alcohol ordinance update, James.
Thank you, Chairman. Plan Commissioners, what you have in your packets is a update to our alcohol works. What we really did was we did five things when updating this ordinance. We reordered a lot of the, the different parts of this ordinance. The reason for the updates was really for to add the section about the agribusiness, which really in turns is our wedding venues, but we didn't want to specify wedding venues out in its entirety, so we called it agribusiness. And our brown bagging section, we wanted to update that to let, to loosen those regulations up a little bit. I want to talk about some decisions that the board needs to move, to make about this ordinance, and I also want to talk about some significant procedural updates. And then I'll go through the details of the agribusiness, but for the purpose of the reordering of this document was not only to accommodate the newly created licenses, but also was for the convenience of staff to better communicate with our businesses and our citizens. We went through this document with several business, with several businesses, compared it to several other jurisdictions as how best to manage this ordinance. And one thing to know about this ordinance is when it was originally created, we had a specific position in planning and development or the Marshals Office at the time as an alcohol license administrator. So we had one person that was dedicated full-time to collecting all these documents, putting together, making sure that they, these things were were done properly, and now that, all that, those duties are divided up over several administrative assistants. Harmony does a lot of these with our alcohol licenses that come before the board. So when we look at our procedurals, we want to try to make, clean these things up to, because we don't have that full-time person to continue doing this. But the main reason for this update was to accommodate agricultural businesses and allowing them to serve alcohol, and we gave them really two different options. One, we gave them the option to come in and get an actual alcohol license so that where they can purchase the alcohol wholesale and actually serve it by the drink to the, to their customers, which really is what it boils down to wedding venues and then being able to provide these wedding venues alcohol to the participants at the, the weddings. And the second is brown bagging, which allows for someone renting the venue to bring their own alcohol and then really serve it back to their guests. And that seems to be the avenue after speaking with almost every wedding venue that we have in Dawson County. That seems to be the avenue that all of them have been doing, and they will continue to do throughout this process. But we wanted to make sure that we give them options going down the road as to if, if, and when they want to continue selling their, their alcohol. But the two things, moving forward, the two things that I wanted to mention to the board, first, the thing we added in, in is section six dash one nineteen, which allows for variances. Now, we have to understand that our alcohol ordinance really is one or two versions right out of Dawson County being a dry county. I mean, if you can, I don't know, Chairman Hammy might be, might remember when this was a dry county you know, probably twenty years ago, maybe. But like I said, we're one or two versions out of that. So we have a lot of businesses that want to come into the county, but a strict and literal interpretation of some of our ordinances have, would restrict them from being able to, to sell alcohol and allowing them to have variances. But not allowing from specific sections, but allowing them to vary from the intent of the code is what we're trying to do. Now, this isn't a variance portion in an alcohol ordinance, isn't something that most jurisdictions do. They want to stay away from it because the state heavily restricts, you know, the, the selling of alcohol, and we wouldn't allow any variances to where, you know, it would, we can't undermine the state, basically. The other section really comes from what, what passed through the the state last year. They, they, they reduced or relaxed some of their curbside delivery and their straight delivery. So they, as of right now in the state of Georgia, a package store can deliver to someone's house unless otherwise restricted in a jurisdiction. So it's up to each individual jurisdiction to make that determination. It's also up to each specific jurisdiction to allow curbside delivery. Now, as of right now, as it stands in our ordinance, we do not allow curbside delivery. So if you go to a package store, they can't come out and put in your truck. We did relax that last year during a specific part of COVID, but so we can't, as of right now, it's as it stands. You can't take it to someone's car at the curb, but we don't have any restrictions about actually delivering it to someone's house. So we're kind of backwards on that right now. We just want to make sure we clear up that language. As far as the brown bagging is concerned, in order to be considered brown bagging, it has to be on premise, in which a county business license has been issued. So there has to be a business license on site that this brown bagging is occurring under, and it has to occur at a location which is different where the alcohol beverage was purchased, obviously. And in the rest of the regulations basically say that it's the responsibility of the person that is renting the venue in order to provide all the alcohol, and it's there, there, they can't serve the minors, they, they have to know those regulations. The only difference between beer and wine and liquor is if they're selling or they're serving actual malt or liquor at these sites, they have to have, hire a a, a bartender with the appropriate training and experience. So most bartenders have the state card that says that they are a state-registered bartender. They have to have that onsite if they are serving liquor. The agribusiness sale of malt beverages and wine just basically allows them to sell it. I, I, I can go through it in more detail if you want, but basically it says that they have, they're restricted on the times they're allowed to do it. They can, see here. It relieves them of the 50% requirement of selling food because most of our wedding venues, they bring, they cater their food from the outside. As our alcohol license stands right now, any alcohol license, 50% of your sales has to come from food. Because Dawson County doesn't, generally, we don't want our, we don't want just strict bars. But agribusiness kind of circumnavigates that a little bit because it's just a different beast altogether. Some of the things that we relaxed in our ordinance was our date and times in which things were submitted. As of right now, an alcohol license has to be renewed by November 31st. And then it expires December 31st. And then you have a grace period. Well, we find ourselves and our staff are getting bogged down, trying to chase down people, getting them to renew. We much rather just turn them over to the Marshals Office and say, hey, listen, you need to, you, you know, your, your alcohol license is expired. We need to, we need to pursue different avenues. There are a few other ins and outs that we kind of just cleaned up. And I'll, I'll entertain any questions that you have about any, any, any other parts of this ordinance. But I think we spent, this is what, a year and a half, two years in the making that we, we've, we've worked on this ordinance and it's finally before the board, before y'all for a recommendation. So I'll entertain any questions.
What type of businesses would not be able to come into Dawson County outside of a bar only based on the current regulations? What you said of the businesses would want to come here, but that's our code, so.
A lot of it has to do with like the 50% regulations. As we know, you know, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with Crave BBQ. They wanted to do a kind of a sample wall and they weren't trying to vary from the intent, but it strictly says that a, a server has to take the dispenser from a dispense to the table. So their, their whole thing was like you could go up and get a sample. You know, that would have been a variance that we would have, that they could, they could have asked. Another one would be, you know, we have, we have other type of breweries in this area that they don't necessarily sell food and they don't want to sell food. Well, what they do is they get a food truck or they get some other way to provide that 50% food regulation. So technically they are kind of a restaurant, but they, they just don't want to deal with the mess of, you know, the, the food application. So that business like, that business couldn't, couldn't come into Dawson County because even though they want to, they don't want to circumnavigate the 50% rule, they just have a different kind of business model to protect that. And we see a lot of, I see a lot of different other, other different people that have some, some interesting ideas sometimes. But you know, we want to be able to put that before the board, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners would make all the decision on variances when it comes to alcohol. I didn't want to make sure that, you know, I didn't want to bring these to the, the planning commission, allow them to make variances. Well, let's let that at the, the Board of Commissioner level, so. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. The pages that you've given us, 134, 135, 137, 146, at least the only, 147, leaves the only pages that have changes.
That is an excellent question. I believe we, we did all the, we, we put the red line version in the, in the packet. They should have had all the different changes. Most of the changes on most of the pages, we're really just cleaning up the different sections and different articles that we changed. But you have the, you have the major changes right there in your.
But there are other changes that we're not physically looking at tonight, is that correct?
They should have been in your packets that were emailed out to you.
So there's nothing big on these pages that are missing, right?
No, like, like she said, one of the other changes was, you know, we, instead of doing, almost everyone does malt beverages and wine. So you can sell beer and wine, that's your typical, you know, your, your gas station. And instead of doing two several applications for each one of those, even though we charge on the same amount, we just made it one application. So you can, you can do both. It makes it easier on staff to, to process. All the major changes you should have right in front of you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is this a public hearing for this? Does anyone to speak in favor of the changes for the new alcohol gap? You would, please come forward, state your name and address, also writing just about your name and address and state your name, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. I actually didn't realize that they were modifying the alcohol, alcohol ordinance and the public hearing was tonight. But I was, I was a commissioner when the original alcohol ordinance came in. And, but it's a, it's a very opportune time. My neighbor across the street, Blake Palmer, he's the founder of Old Dad's Wings. I don't know if you've had those or not, but he now is operating the restaurant at Chesta T Golf Club. And he just asked me the other day what it would take to get the ordinance change to allow for brunch. I guess, and something I didn't realize, but they can't serve a brunch because you can't serve alcohol before 12 o'clock or 12:30 or whatever it is on Sunday. But he said, most of the counties like Lumpkin and other ones that have wineries and all the places that you have a nice brunch, the finer dining places, they can't do that in Dawson County because of that part of the ordinance. So because of the fact you don't like to open up an ordinance very often and you want to take care of everything. I would petition Jameson to maybe look into that and see if maybe this might be a very opportune time to, if everyone supported it, to include that.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Apparently this brunch ordinance the other counties have is geared to amount of food you sell. I mean, you have to, you have to sell food with it. It's not just serving it by itself.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the new alcohol ordinance updates? Seeing that, anyone speaking opposition to the new alcohol ordinance updates? See, none, this time we'll close it to the board for discussion. Any further discussion? Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Moving a second, all in favor? Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Next public hearing will be at the May 6th Board of Commissioners meeting on the alcohol ordinance update. Is there any further planning and zoning updates?
We continue working on the 453 overlay. We are almost at the point where we're ready to pass out things to the commission as well as the long range planning committee. We're continuing doing a, our inter gov update through planning and zoning. So our, our permitting applications and variances and zonings hopefully soon will be able to be done online through an online portal. That way, as people do their building and their, their inspections, they can request those online and they can see about, in real time as to when are their inspectors, inspectors get on site and if they approve or pass any inspections. And I believe that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. That leaves for ale, German. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.